Let's go ahead and start, guys. Everybody ready?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Call to order, the May 16, 2017 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phones, your pagers, and other electronic devices, please. If you need an agenda, they are in the back at the bookcase. Next is a moment of silent reflection led by -- pledge allegiance led by Sheriff Tom.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a review and approval of agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by LaCroix. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is placed -- is acted upon by one motion of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items, five through thirteen. Number five is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 2, 2017. Number six is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Rochford Rural Fire Association/ VFD. Number seven is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Rochford Community Club. Number eight is the approval of the resolution to discharge county liens of deceased persons as submitted by the auditor. Number nine is to accept the low roofing ink bid for a total of $90,270 as the lowest responsible bid and authorize the chair's signature to the construction contract as required by the bid documents, which is for the Juvenile Detention Center re-roofing Phase Two project. Number 10 is to approve authorization for extension to apply for the Best Buy Community Grant. Number 11 is to approve a public display of fireworks for the Black Hill Speedway on Friday, July 1, with rain-out dates of Sunday, July 2, Saturday, July 8, or Sunday, July 9, provided that they meet the requirements as stated by the fire administrator. Number 12 is to approve authorization to Health and Human Services to apply for the Emergency Solutions Grant for the Safe Solutions Program and authorize the director's signature to the application. And finally, number 13 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of April 2017 as submitted by Human Resources.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
You're welcome.
At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items five through 13 from the consent agenda? Five through 13. If not, is there any Board members who would like to remove any items from five through 13 on the consent agenda?
Item 10, please.
Number 10 for Mr. LaCroix. Any others? Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The motion would be to move -- approve all the items except number 10 on the consent agenda. Any objections? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, Mr. LaCroix.
The only reason I had this pulled matters is because I just wanted to take a moment to tell you what a good job you did on doing this request. You know, I've seen a lot of people do requests for grants, and I just wanted to make a point to give you the kudos that you need for -- that's a lot of work for a small amount of money. So, and Lori, for working with them with getting the computers and so forth, I think you used your resources well. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you. And that's to approve authorization to extension to apply for the Best Buy Community Grant?
Second.
Motion by LaCroix, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're on the regular agenda items. Items from the auditor, Ms. Julie. Is the auditor here? Ms. Holly, could you see where the auditor is? She's coming. Ms. Julie, you're up. What you got in that coffee, Ms. Julie? Thank you, Ms. Julie. Number 14, please.
What we have before you is a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. The -- for all the application is attached. Fees have been paid. Everything has been published. We are doing things a little bit different this year because before the state will approve or send out the license -- they don't approve them, you do. Before they send out the license, property taxes have to be paid on the parcel that the liquor license or beer license sits on. And we used to pull the application and the advertising if we knew that they hadn't paid the taxes. Under the new rules by the Department of Revenue, we have to get the applications and the fees prior to the April 30 deadline date for property taxes to be paid. And since that was not the fault of the -- and they still don't send them out until the end of June, so we don't know why they backed their date up so far. But what we do now is we're going to have the Board approve the licenses, and we will -- and only upon the payment of the taxes, which is included in the motion, will we send the information into peer. That means we don't have to double up on the work of publishing it twice. We charge them an extra fee if they don't get it in by the deadline, and this way, there's no argument on their part that we held up the license, or the state did, so that they couldn't sell on the 1st of July.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
So that's why you see -- and to hold the licenses until property taxes are paid. We only have one in this list that the property taxes have not been paid through. We checked yesterday, and we'll make a continual check and send it in.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
At that time.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve new retail on-off malt beverage license for retail off Freezy Market Casino Whispering Pines Campground Hart Ranch Camp Resort.
And that's approval with the licenses and to hold the license until property taxes are paid. Am I correct, Mr. LaCroix? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buschard. Any discussion?
All the licenses on this first application have been paid.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Malt --
Second is the annual renewal of the malt beverage licenses. And again, these all have paid their fee, been properly advertised. The only one, as of yesterday, that has not paid their property taxes is on page two of the Johnson Siding General Store. What happens if they don't have the physical license intact on July 1, we notify the sheriff's office, law enforcement, that they cannot sell their liquor or malt beverage until they physically receive that from the state. And so there's no chance that they'll be sneaking by.
Thank you, Ms. Julie. Is there a motion, please? Your motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. Is there a second?
I'll second with a friendly amendment to abstain from the corner pantry on Moon Meadows.
Okay, so there's a second with a extension from Moon Meadows. Is that how we do that? Okay.
Corner pantry, Moon Meadows. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Julie. Next is items from the sheriff, and this would be bid award for underwater remote operated vehicle and electronic components. Mr. Tom.
Good morning. Kevin Tompkins, County Sheriff, and you have the information and the recommended motion in front of you. We did get three bids for the ROV, Remote Operated Vehicle, and recommend, as in the motion, from Seymour Marine Limited for $86,885, and wrote over it zero cents, I guess. And one other item I wanted to mention is, we talked last time about the number of private donations that were raised for this effort, and it was a little over $36,000. Well, since then, Pizza Ranch did another donation of $7,000 to the Walleye Unlimited to go towards this, so the community support's been huge, so I want to thank all them for that, and just would ask for a motion to approve the purchase of the ROV.
Thank you.
A move to approve.
With the motion to authorize Pennsyl County Sheriff's Office to award the bid for underwater remote operated vehicle to Seymour Marine LTD for the total of $86,885 to be paid by a combination of Homeland Security grant funding contributions made by friends and family of Gabby Fisher and Walleye's Unlimited and Pizza Ranch.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion made by DeSanto and second by Mr. LaCroix. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin Tompkins. Next, we have items from equalization. And your name, sir?
Good morning. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have one abatement request before you. This is pretty simple. It's a mobile homeowner to North Dakota sometime in 2012. This is an abatement of the 2013 taxes.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, too.
Motion by Buschard?
Second.
Second by LaCroix. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Woo! Go agenda. Number 17, items from the highway. Your name, sir?
Good morning. Tom Wilson, Highway Department. First item from highway is authorization to bid one new tractor with twin-deck mowers. This tractor is to be added to our highway fleet in Wall. The last five years, there's been a program that we took advantage of. Three to five years ago, we leased two tractors from different -- from the vendors here in town. The last two years, we've leased one tractor at a reduced cost. They have ended that program. We could -- if we wished to lease, we would have to lease at full price. In looking at the cost of tractors, we believe it's in the county's advantage to purchase a tractor with mower decks rather than just lease the tractor. Tractors of this size were bid two years ago. We paid $116,753 per tractor. I attached the specifications for these new units, and there's no outstanding county or state bid on these type of units. Tractors and mowers would be purchased using monies from the county highway budget, item, capital assets, vehicles in excess of $5,000. I am requesting a motion for authorization for Highway Department to go to bid for one new tractor with twin-deck mowers.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move, approve.
Moved by LaCroix. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Second by Buschard for discussion. Discussion on the motion. Commissioner LaCroix.
So, Tom, the leases -- you used to lease them out, and then they'd do the maintenance on them and so forth, and now they went up to full price, and so
Yes.
You're going to be capable of maintaining these to keep them up at a reasonable cost?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay.
Typically, for maintenance and for depreciation on a tractor, we figure about $50, $51 for a tractor. The lease just for a tractor is $40. With the new mower decks added to this, we can use a lot more time -- for more time during the year.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion?
Chair.
Ms. Commissioner DeSanto.
Tom, who will you be seeking bids from?
It'll probably be the normal people around here, such as Jenner, RDO, all the implement dealers. These are just -- these are what I would call medium-sized farm tractors.
Okay.
That's who we typically get bids from, is Jenner and Jenner, RDO. There's one other I can't remember right off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Farby.
I've got a question or two. What's the horsepower?
Pardon?
What size horsepower engine are you looking for?
We're looking at 110 horse or more.
That's
Minimum of 110. For pulling the bat wing mowers that we have in Wall, we need more horsepower on the draw hitch.
Your specifications say 110 PTO horsepower. What's the engine horsepower?
Yes. That's what we mean.
The engine's the same?
Um
Not typically.
Without having the specs in front of me, I couldn't tell you what the engine's spec -- sorry.
Second question is, do we really need -- I'll go back up. The non-clutching -- how much does that feature cost?
Pardon?
The non-clutching feature.
I am not -- it comes as a pack -- part of the package, is what I'm being told.
Do you have any idea how much the difference between a clutching and a non-clutching feature is?
I can't tell you without looking.
I'm guessing that's a fairly expensive feature, and I can't vote for a non-clutching bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So it'd be three, four, and two against. Commissioner Farby and DeSanto are no. Thank you. We are on -- thank you, Tom.
Second item on my agenda is South Rochford Road Project Special Public Meeting. The 2017 Appropriations Act came through, and I sent to you folks what I received from the Rounds Camp, and they feel that we cannot repurpose the funds for the South Rochford. So we need to decide what we want to do with that program. In discussions with different people around of you and with local people, they've requested that we do a special meeting where everybody can get up and talk about it and give their opinions. So I guess I'm requesting a time and date when we can have a special meeting.
Thank you, Tom. I also talked to the people for and against, and they would like a public meeting. Talked to some of the commissioners, and we can still have that discussion, maybe next Wednesday at 5:30 here. But let's see what -- where the discussion goes and what's the wish of the Board. Okay? Discussion, please.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I guess this project's been long, and we've -- I think we've done our due diligence as far as checking if we could repurpose and so forth. But I think it's important that, you know, as a newer commissioner, this started out 10 years ago. I would -- and all's I've ever heard come forward in the last month or so is opposition. I'd kind of like to hear both sides, how it originally started out, and some of their input before I make a decision. So I think the special meeting is appropriate to happen, if at the very least to help educate myself.
Is there anyone from the audience also that would like to speak on this? I forgot to ask. Come on up, sir. I apologize. I probably should have asked you guys first, since it is a public meeting.
Good morning. Dan Holsworth. Appreciate you allowing me the time, Madam President and boards of the member, to speak on why we need the public meeting. In doing more research on this project, we have involved -- where we have approached Chamber of Hill City, the Town Council of Hill City, School Board of Hill City, Economic Development of Hill City. This morning had a meeting. They're in full support of the project up there. I was made aware of that this morning. Definitely an evening meeting for all the working-class people that do want to come to the meeting for the support on that. Look impact on this work history and what has been done since '04 on this to bring this to the stages it has been, has been huge. And I think one of the bigger things that I've seen was, of course, with DOT going to take and do the environmental study and then throwing it back in your laps, delayed quite a bit of time on this, and that's very understandable. There were some real good things that were brought forth also in this timeline with lessening the whis on this road to 28 feet, which I think is a great aspect of that portion of it. There was concerns that were brought forward also about the reapportioning, as far as what's been spent on it already and the 10% rule, as far as the reapportioning portion of what comes into play. I think that's a big part of it. Last meeting, it was also mentioned that there was only 33 cars per day on that road, and doing more research -- excuse me, research on that, there's actually was in that study 110 vehicles per day. And seeing what we do on paving in smaller areas and what we're putting for energy towards that versus this, I think very much so qualifies it to put it in that position. What we've seen on as far as the right-of-way purchasing, you know, we looked a little harder and heavier on that, and I do agree that more of it is going to be in the Forest Service portions of it. And looking back also in the agreement that we had with the tribes as far as where we're at on them, the agreement that was put together with them, that they would allow any work in right-of-way, anything that needs to be done, is very clear in this document, as well as law enforcement protection, anything else that applies to any of that land, for what we have for the nations that signed this. And we've got four of the top tribal people that have signed off on this, along with the Interior Department. So to me, that makes a huge portion of that also, all come into compliance on that aspect of it. I also have heard, of course, costs of what we're going to be at and what's going to be probably a higher number. And I have a good friend, Jerry Wagner, from J&amp;J Asphalt that I made a call to this morning just to get a rough idea, what per mile is it cost to lay asphalt?
Mr. --
Jerry kind of gave us
Sir, just a second. This can all be said at a public meeting. I just need to know, and the Board needs to know, if you're in favor of the public meeting.
Yes, I am.
And the people you said that are in favor of it, that's awesome.
Yes.
But you can reiterate all of this at the public meeting without trying to be rude to you today.
Very good. No, I appreciate that. But support is heavy.
Thank you.
So I do totally support that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaCroix.
So, Madam Chair, and Holly, what kind of notice do we need to give for a public meeting? I mean, it sounds like they want to do it in the evening.
There's enough time. If you wanted to schedule it next week, we can do that. I just have to put it -- I can reach out to the chambers. It just depends if you guys want to do it as an official meeting where you could take action, or if it's just going to be an informational meeting. But we have time to get it out.
Okay.
And if I may
Good, Ms. Julie.
The difference that Holly was just mentioning, and I was just talking to Jay, we are concerned whether we don't normally appear at these to take minutes, so we need it clarified until we get a different opinion from Jay, if it's an informational meeting or if it's an official meeting, until we get some further clarification from Jay. As we've become aware of the public information and notifying the public and everything, it may entail that we have to start taking minutes at a lot more of these ventures that you have.
So we could do an information meeting next Wednesday, but we can't take official action without all the notifications, and I still think we need to have minutes and stuff of that.
We don't normally take minutes unless it's an official meeting.
We'll have the -- it'll -- if you hold it here, we can record it.
Okay.
It'll be on record that way. If you hold it up there, it's a little tougher with the portable video camera, things like that.
And I've talked to people for and against, and they weren't opposed to having it here, and I said the same thing. So it's easier for us to speak, them to speak to us, and then, again, we're recorded. So that would be up to the Board still, but I have spoke to people for and against that weren't opposed to having it here at the chambers, just so it was at night.
Just from what -- looking down the aisle, I think information meeting, but I like the idea of it being recorded so we can go back and look and get -- have records of the information where there is
So that's okay, Ms. Julie?
Do you want us -- until we get further clarification from Jay, do you want us to take minutes? Prepare a set of minutes. We can do it from the recording. That's legal. We don't physically have to be present, but if you called it an official meeting, then if you went along, we could take the -- any official action that you do do at that. Otherwise, if it's just informational, as you recall, our minutes don't record anything but motions.
Okay. Let's see with the Board.
So if we could just have direction when you make your motion, whether you want us to set up meetings or not, will tell us what we need to do, and then after reviewing the whole process with Jay, we'll come back and inform you of when we do have to take minutes and when we don't.
The main thing is we need to make sure that what we're doing is legal and that, you know, everybody gets that information is number two and, you know, so they can show up for this meeting.
Yes.
So, Board, what's your wish?
Either way, Holly does, I think, the same notifications to the public.
Okay.
It's just what we call it, and if you want minutes
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I would suggest that it be informational only, so that we have time to digest everything we learn.
Is that a motion?
I would so move to make a motion that it would be informational meeting only on Wednesday at 5:30.
Hold on just a sec. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Now, ma'am?
And I do have some handouts. Holly, if I
Okay. Is this on the public meeting?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
There are a few other things in there, but I would ask you to slip down to number three.
Okay.
And it's right after the vanilla covered.
Okay? So you're saying there was a public meeting, ma'am?
Oh. I'm Carol Pitts. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm a landowner in Rochford. My family has been there for over 70 years.
Okay.
And it's in Rochford. But what I would like to point out, and there's many things to say, as you know, Commissioner Haddock, and I will be as brief as possible. I do have other things in this handout related to the project, but on this page, which would be number three, public meetings already held
Okay.
and accounted for. This is page four that was put out, I assume, to the commissioners. If you -- I put it in backwards, so you would have page four first.
Okay.
But it was a South Rochford Road environmental assessment. And what's important to remember is that was an environmental assessment, not an economic assessment. But what it says here in the steps of NEP process were all the public meetings.
Right.
Those public meetings should have transcripts, and they should have letters. I would recommend, before we jump into another informational meeting, that commissioners have access to all of that information from those meetings. There was lots of people there. There was things said. There were no elected officials from any community at those meetings. Nobody spoke from Hill City. Nobody spoke from Deadwood. Nobody spoke from Rapid City. And so I would just like to give you that information, that if people are starting to come out of the woodwork now, that we have had several. And I've put little marks by those public input meetings, starting in 2012. 2012, 2012, 2013, a landowner meeting, public information meeting in 2014, public meeting in 2016. I did attend those. I did write letters, as everyone that was involved in this project was able to do.
So, ma'am?
And so I would recommend that we at least read those first before there is any informational meeting, and I would actually oppose a new one. I think that the commissioners do have much information. I don't have the final answer, obviously. I think, though, that as you look at it, I don't know if another public informational meeting would give you more economic information or more information in making a final decision.
Thank you, Ms. Carol.
Thank you.
That's a good point, but I think we can read those That, that's a good point, but I think we can read those, that information before next week and also still have the meeting just to bring forward because you said one comment that was, there was no officials at those meetings and I think it's good for us to hear what those comments and, and what the people are thinking and still read those comments. Ma'am, would you like to come up? Hi, your name, please?
My name is Sue Schwanicki, I am a resident of Rochford and I own property on South Rochford Road. From the beginning, this project has encouraged the participation and feedback of the residents, the stakeholders and other interested parties. We've had many public meetings and they've been open. Some were held in Rochford, some were held in Hill City. Newsletters were sent out and a website was created. There's always been information going both ways. In two thousand sixteen, the EA was completed and the road project was scheduled for two thousand eighteen. Now it appears as though the project might be in jeopardy. Statements have been made that the residents don't want the project. I respectfully disagree. The project has always welcomed input from the residents and this should not stop now. I am requesting that the Predington Board hold an evening meeting at a convenient place so that the residents and other impacted parties can provide direct feedback. The meetings that were held, and I was at all the meetings too, were very good. I think the people in the area were very much taken aback when the board took the project back out of the plan. I have met with a lot of people in the area. I think the folks in Hill City were just blindsided on this. They thought the project was just going forward. I think you need to hear from the people and I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Sue. Any discussion from the board?
I do.
Commissioner Busker?
As everybody probably here knows, I've, I've been an opponent for this from day Mainly because one of the proponents just said it's a hundred and ten cars a day. What is our, Tom, what is the, two-hundred-and-fifty, that's what we need before it really should be paved?
That's pretty much the standard practice.
Yeah. So, we've got a long ways to go before even our own policies are, to pave it. But with all that said, a hundred and ten cars a day versus about nine thousand on Sheridan Lake Road. And I think was well said in the Star Trek movie, the good of the many overshadows the good of the few. However, with all that said, and I guess I'm not in favor of a public meeting, it's a good idea, we should probably do it, except when I read from Tom's memo that says we are, we can't repurpose the money. I can't see paying back one point two million and I, so I, as much as I hate to say it, I would be willing to vote right now in favor of proceeding with the project.
Second. Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Second.
Can we do that legally, vote for this project on here because we noticed special public meeting is how we noticed this on the, in as much as.
And I, and, and if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I guess I have no problem with a special meeting, but I think what it would go to is stuff like what Carol is talking about on her property and how we're going to build the project and how we're going to preserve some of the, the things that are there as opposed to whether we should build it or not. I, I think that's a foregone conclusion and.
So, where's Jay?
Not sure. I guess if you had asked me, I think it's too slippery of a slope and would create an appealable issue. It's been noticed as a special, a public meeting. I would ask the board to not make a final decision today.
And I'll tell you, I think it'll be good to hear from all the residents out there and so the public understands that we don't just have five people that want this road. We have Chamber of Commerce, we have the economic development, we have neighbors, because I've, I can honestly say, I keep hearing that people are saying, you know, there's four or five for the road and the rest isn't wanted and, again, I would like to too find those, if we could, Holly, find the comment piece that was done, the public meetings they had, so all of us have accessed that before the meeting, because I think, again, I'll agree, and that's why I said it, I think we still need to have this meeting. So, there was a motion by DeSanto and second by Mr. LaCroy to have the meeting. Are you?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I was just kind of shooting my mouth off.
Okay, so you're okay. So, we're back to the original motion, any discussion on the original motion?
Are we still on the meeting?
That was the original motion, five-thirty next Wednesday here.
Notice may not, the law may not require notice in the weekly paper, but, but I would strongly suggest that we not do it next week because the Hill City paper doesn't come out until Wednesday next week. So, that's not forty-eight hour, twenty-four hour notice, so I'd, I'd be cautious of, meeting before the Hill City paper can publish it. If we're going to have a special meeting, and I don't know whether I'm going to vote for or against a special meeting, but, but if we're going to notice it properly, legally we may not have to wait another week, but Hill City paper comes out on Wednesday.
Ms. Sue or, Ms. Sue, do you, can you come up just for a second, Ms. Sue? Is there any way we can make sure that the folks in Hill City, Rochford and the surrounding area that would see that newspaper or otherwise would get this special meeting, so they could attend, I mean, is, do we need a?
I know when they did the other special meetings, they appeared in the Rapid City Journal, they did not appear in the Hill City Papers. And I can tell you that I have a listing of the people that provided email addresses during the previous public meetings.
Okay.
And I can send out notices on that and, you know, put up flyers in Rochford.
Okay.
I can't speak necessarily, I don't live in Hill City, I live in Rochford.
Okay.
I, Dan might be able to address what we can do to get the word out in Hill City also.
Okay. Ms. Holly, can we do it in the Rapid City Journal?
Yeah, there's absolutely time.
Okay, because I'm, I'm thinking between the Chamber of Commerce and the things, the things that, what was your gentleman's name?
Oh, Dan?
Dan, that he could contact them and they could contact people as well, so I think we would be pretty much covered for making sure people knew that this was going to be noticed. Ms. Carol?
Thank you, thank you. Sue, with all due, with all due respect, I think a week is very short notice for anyone from outside the area that has interest in that meeting. And so, I would respectfully request at least a two-week timeframe for people to be able to get it on their schedule and to be able to attend the meeting. Word of mouth is nice, but it doesn't get everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I have no problem with two weeks either.
Right. And we do want to move the project ahead as well as, as we have been delayed, so two weeks for that and then we wouldn't have another meeting for another two weeks for us, if I'm correct, Holly. No, it wouldn't work that way?
If you were to schedule it May thirty-first, I can still put it on the agenda for the June sixth commission meeting for a final decision.
I'll be gone.
On June sixth?
Uh, May thirty-first, did you say?
The public meeting?
Yes. I'm going to see my niece graduate in Arizona, so I apologize for that. That's something that's pretty important.
When do you leave?
Twenty-seventh.
Guess that's up to the board.
Be back.
I'll be back the June third.
Oh.
I don't go out of town very often, but that's something I need to do, so.
I understand.
The devil be here at all.
Okay, we need, anybody have a suggestion, Ms. Holly, Ms. Julie?
Why not Thursday, the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, Ms. Holly, Thursday?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
I thought you were just trying to avoid that week when Deb was going to be gone.
I understand that, but I mean, this is going to be an informational meeting type thing.
Twenty-fifth. All right, Mr. LaCroy, I'll be here the twenty-fifth, I don't leave till the twenty-seventh, Ms. Holly.
That's again, only a week's notice.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the week's notice.
Yeah, there'd be no point in moving it from Wednesday to Thursday.
Right.
It's not going to do anything as far as.
Well, it gets, the paper gets distributed on Wednesday, so Thursday, the Hill City paper gets distributed on Wednesday.
Wednesday, we get it, we get it in the mail on Thursday.
Okay.
So, those of us that get it in the mail, it's Thursday.
And I think if we have that public meeting, we're going to get pretty much a lot of the people for it against that are going to come out that week anyway. And then we still have time for them to come, if they still have comments, to the next meeting when we want to make a final decision, so it's not like it's cut and dry right there. Make sense?
If you wanted to do the twenty-fifth, I would hit the Rapid City Journal, I would hit the Hill City Prevailor, we would do Facebook, I would reach out through the Chamber of Commerce, ask them to mail through theirs, it would be posted on the county bulletin boards, it would be sent to the news, or the radio stations.
It'd be everybody, it'd be blasted out.
I mean, that's what I would do as a typical notification stream.
Okay, so what's the wish of the board?
May I suggest?
Commissioner DeSanto?
Do we have it Friday, the twenty-sixth? Deb will be here, we'll all be here.
No, we won't.
Oh, you won't be here.
Okay, guys, I think we should leave it on Wednesday. I think we'll do okay, or Thursday. You want to change it to Thursday so the paper gets out that day, we're having it that night?
I will.
Amend?
Amend my motion to make it Thursday at five-thirty.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we, we need to be cognizant of what Ms. Pitts brought up as time for others to plan, you know, notification for, for the bulk of people, but what happens to those that have input that are distance aways or have other conflicts so they can plan and, and that's a good thought that she had was, let's, let's give it a little time.
I think what I said was that that week, people would show up and then they'd have another two weeks to either give emails, call us, that's about, that, that's a pretty good timeframe in between there to make sure everybody gets their input, whether by phone call, email or at a public meeting before we make a final decision, guys, so.
Madam Chair, I think part of what Ms. Pitts was trying to say was people do have schedules, they don't live around the county, so if they have something scheduled, maybe two weeks, give them a little more time to rearrange their schedule to be there.
Okay, so do you have a substitute?
I don't know what dates, but I'd say it, as Ms. Pitts brought up, at least two weeks, whatever that works out to be.
Okay. There's been a substitute motion to delay for two weeks instead of that Thursday, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Give it some extra time.
Okay.
It's his, it's George's area, so I would say he knows better than anybody does.
The main thing is if people have scheduling conflict, they have a little more chance to work around it in a couple of weeks rather than a week's time.
Guess my point is we delayed this two weeks, then we delayed another two weeks for a final decision for people that's had a promise made thirteen years ago and we keep delaying. I want to make sure everybody has that input, but I still believe that in that week, we're going to get the input we need and anybody who wants to notify us before then, I think is going to make sure they know their point or we know their point, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I'm not going to support the motion on the floor for the simple fact that I think we're, we're trying to get some information from some of the people that was the original part of this, that started this out. I'm willing to go with next week and this is not a decision-making date, there's going to be plenty of time for public comment following that. We'll have a meeting after, it'll be on the agenda two, three weeks after that, so I mean, we're not really accomplishing nothing by waiting two weeks. I understand George's thoughts about it, but it's not a final deal, we have more time for public comment coming. So, with that, I'm not going to support the motion on the floor.
Okay, let's vote on that motion to delay.
I have one more thing, if I can.
Commissioner?
And for that meeting, I would like a, a better estimate of the cost and what is going to cost this. And I want to make sure that the bridge is included in that project. Some people don't think it is, so.
I can tell you, the bridge has been taken out of the grading project, it's a project of its own and we're trying, and that's in design right now.
And is that earmarked for, is the bridge in the earmarked funds? It's not then?
I don't think so, I think it is BRO money now. I think they transferred BRO money to do it.
Yep.
Which is bridge money.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor to delay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So, we're delaying for two weeks?
Do we have a date?
No. No date, no nothing.
Okay.
My next suggestion would be Wednesday, June seventh, to be able to put it on the June twentieth agenda.
So, it'd be June seventh, is that what the motion maker wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
At five-thirty?
Okay, and what, what day is that?
That's a Wednesday evening.
Okay, and so, the project, did we had a timeframe that we had, remember Joel was saying something about the timeframe?
Yes, the timeframe is we have to be purchasing right-of-way by two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so we're good by?
We're good for now, we're, we're pushing the designers back and they're getting, it's going to get pretty tight.
Okay, so the next meeting will be, there was three ayes, Ms. Kara, two noes, Commissioner Haddock and Commissioner LaCroy on two weeks, on June seventh, so the motion did carry, okay?
No.
So, the next, excuse me, hold on, just seg George, so the next meeting will be Wednesday, June seventh at five-thirty, so everybody's clear. Okay?
Gotcha.
So, can we make it so we can make a motion that day, since it's that far out?
My recommendation is we schedule it as a special commission meeting, we're going to notice it, we'll have a minute taker here and you can make a final decision.
Okay, everybody okay with that, with the motion? If we want to make a final decision there, we can?
Yep, okay with that.
All right, June seventh.
Madam Chair, there's one other issue needs to be resolved before we have that meeting and that's, there appears to be a conflict of the fifteen percent or the ten percent rule. My sources tell me that that fifteen percent rule or ten percent rule isn't hard and fast. So, I think we need to resolve that.
I have no idea what you're talking about, Commissioner Farby.
The redirection.
Yes.
The redirecting of the funds is, is not cast in stone, is my understanding.
Okay, we're not, we're past that at this point, but if you'd like to put it on the agenda on repurposing again or how that's done, this was a special public meeting on Rochford Road.
Well, I think this is an integral part of that.
Is it ten and fifteen percent?
It is, yes.
So, to change it into the repurpose again?
We need to re.
The same question.
Commissioner Busker?
Whether we do or we don't do the road. And, and the reason I changed my mind is because it's ten percent, we've already gone by that, so there's nothing frankly to discuss, but if it's fifteen percent, now we're back and probably there is something to discuss.
Okay, Tom. Based on Tom's agenda, there was no fifteen percent.
What I had received was the, I looked at the bill itself, the appropriations bill, it specifically said ten percent. I don't know where this fifteen percent, what we have spent is fifteen and a half percent.
We've spent over the ten.
We have spent fifteen and one-half percent, fifteen point five percent.
And Kasai from Thune's office said the same thing, this would be move it forward, move forward with this project, guys, or you could lose it.
Yes.
And that was his exact quote, move forward with or lose it, that's Thune's office, guys, that's not Gnom's or anybody else's. So, I think the more you delay this, the more we're not going to have any of it and we're not going to have any of that money. This is a thirteen-year promise and we keep going back to maybe we'd repurpose. I think once you have that public meeting, it's going to be huge for the people and this road because it also, if you're talking economic development and other people in Hill City. they're saying if the road is paved, it's not just gonna have a hundred and ten anymore. It could easily hit that two fifty you're talking about. Just because it's going to make development happen out there, and some people don't want that. They want a gravel road. Well, that's not the wish of the majority that I'm hearing. I'm hearing people that are against, I'm not gonna say I haven't. But I've heard the majority, and you have the whole, she just, or, he just said it, school board, chamber, economic development, I mean, that tells us something, so.
Madam Chair, if I might, I believe-
Sir Farby.
I believe there's a representative from Senator Thune's office that will give us some information.
Morning Commissioners, Mark Howgan of Senator Thune's office.
Morning, Mark.
Apologize for the head cold here. Kasai is in DC and asked me to stop by if our name got invoked and to pass along some more information. And George's been talking with us as well. The, on its face, the language of the bill does appear, as Senator Rounds's office would say, to indicate that the project couldn't be repurposed. But the Federal Highway Administration has come up with a workaround to allow states to essentially pay back this money, do the additional work, repurpose, so your options are still open. I believe Joel has been here, and I don't know if he'd said that, but I know our office has been working with Joel. And he's well aware of that, he knows the technicalities of going back and forth between the state and the feds. And they do have a workaround. It's similar to language that was in the two thousand and sixteen legislation. And the repurposing applies across the country, it's not specific here. It's no special language we put in or anything like that. I think across the country, projects like this have run into similar situations where at the time those things were being rolled out, for whatever reasons, they just didn't have their ducks in a row and things took longer than intended.
So Mr. Kasai is saying something to Mr. Thune's office? Is, doesn't he represent Mr. Thune's? Because what I heard from somebody that met with him said, this basically again was a no-brainer, that this road should be done. It's been a promise for the people, that this should move forward. It might not happen otherwise.
Well, and that would have been, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
That would have been third-hand, this is firsthand, unless you talked with Kasai. But I talked with him before he flew out on Sunday. And maybe if that was old, I don't know how long ago they talked to him.
Last week.
That is our understanding, and I talked with our legislative director yesterday as well. She says, at this time, it'll be up to the county and the state to decide how to proceed. Again, either repurposing, and one of those purposes can be, you know, continuing on with the project. Proceed with the project or repay the federal funds as they've been, that you've expended, so. That is our understanding. It's our, that is, Joel as well has been, he might be one that you want to check in with as well.
He's been kind of the point man on that with the federal highways. Thank you. Commissioner Lucroy.
I think one of the key things that he mentioned is, in order to repurpose, you have to repay back the funds that have been spent already. I mean, that's what I heard, and that's what I remember hearing from Joel. And so I think we have a meeting set in time, and we've had a motion. And I hate to say it, but I mean, I think this information come forward at that meeting right now. This, none of this is on our agenda. So I think we'll see you in two weeks at the public meetings, is what I'm thinking.
So that's an invitation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is a huge, huge decision for the county. And I think before we take that fork in the road, whichever fork we take, that we ought to get Mr. Junt from DOT to come lay out specifically, at this point in time, what our options are. Thank you.
Ms. Sue.
I realize that you just got some new information. However, I don't think it changes the position that the residents should be able to speak for or against the road. And I think the commissioners need to be able to hear what the people in the area want. That may not change what their decision is, that may not change whether they want to do Sheridan Lake Road or do something else. But I think it's only fair to the residents that they be given the opportunity to speak for a project that was promised thirteen years ago and which they have been very involved in. And like I said in the previous commissioners' meeting, I have documents going back to nineteen eighty-eight where they were asking for this road. The road is in horrible condition. And I don't see a problem proceeding and investigating what Commissioner Farby is asking for. But you need to hear from the people. And I ask that you have the public meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sue. We already had voted on that, so we are- Ms. Sue, we're gonna have it Wednesday, June seventh at five-thirty, but thank you. Sir?
My name is Wayne Hartman, I am just a resident in Hill City. And I'm for this project, I think we should have the meeting. I think you should make a decision at that meeting. You've kicked this can down the road for thirteen years. Just say yes or no. Listen to the people, they elected you.
Thank you, sir. So we do have a motion and it has passed, so we are having it June third, five-thirty. June seventh, seventh, sorry, I said that four times and then last time I did. Okay, let's go on to number eighteen, items from weed and pest. Your name, sir?
Doc Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. And I'm gonna give you an update on one of the largest and probably longest pine beetle epidemics we've had in the Black Hills. It's been declared as over. Gonna show you some numbers of how the financial impacts and acre impacts that's happened to the Black Hills. As I said, it's probably one of the largest and one of the longest. We don't know for certain, we know the pine beetle has been here since the ponderosa pine has been in the Black Hills, so it's a native pest. It's been here since recorded history of man. Hard to get hard estimates, or they were simply estimates in the past until two thousand and ten, when we started using high-resolution aerial photography to get sound numbers on acres impacted. So you can see on this bar graph, it topped out at thirty-four thousand in two thousand and thirteen. And then the crash began in fourteen, and then sixteen, we're down to twenty-five hundred and it continued to decrease. Not to say that we're rid of pine beetle, like I said, it'll always be here, it's a native pest. So we'll always be affected. And the buildup of trees, we'll probably have another epidemic twenty, thirty years from now, so. Here's a map of the infested area. You can see it's pretty much throughout the Black Hills. And the acre breakdown on the right by county. Notice that Pennington County seventy-five thou, over seventy-five thousand acres just from two thousand and ten by far had the most acres impacted, over more, twice as much as the next closest county. Overall, from ninety-eight, the beginning of the epidemic, about four hundred and fifty thousand acres impacted, estimated over twenty-two million trees killed. Here's just another indication that the epidemic is over. This is a brood count done by the entomologists in the spring of the year. They peel back the bark of the tree, take a look at the pine beetle brood. Every indication again is showing that the epidemic is over. A few hotspots still down there in the southwest part of Custer. But for the most part, we're back down to endemic levels. Just talk briefly on how we started to work cooperatively and together on attacking this epidemic in two thousand and ten. Then Forest Service Supervisor Craig Bobzine called a conservation leaders' meeting together. I think we had like over eighty entities and agencies represented at that meeting. Mayors, county commissioners, state legislators, congressional representatives, and then a number of agencies and timber folks and private landowners. And try to figure out how we could work more effective and efficiently together to attack this ever-growing epidemic. From that, it was decided to form a subcommittee, which I was a part, to develop the mountain pine beetle strategy. And from that strategy, we identified to form a mountain pine beetle working group. That working group consisted of basically on-the-ground land managers working together, both agency and industry folks. Here are the four goals that we identified in that strategy. Obviously reduce the pine beetle epidemic down to endemic populations. Create, maintain a healthy forest, retain our forest products industry in the Black Hills, and then protect people and communities. These were our accomplishments over those five years. The main goal I want to point out here is goal three, the forest industry. We're lucky to still have a thriving forest industry in the Black Hills. It, bless you.
Thank you.
We, it impacts fourteen hundred jobs in the region, and it has over a hundred and twenty million dollar economic impact to the region per year. If we didn't have that forest products industry still in the Black Hills, that epidemic would have been probably ten times worse. Here's some of the county accomplishments from our program. Right-of-way, public safety was a major concern of our project. You can see we cut over twenty thousand trees along our right-of-ways. Before we had our agreement in place with the Forest Service, it was up to county highway to go out, and they could only cut down the ones that were blown down by the wind. So they were getting called out after our work hours to go out and cut these trees. Sheriff's Department would get called, and then the county highway would have to come out and cut them. It was, it was a real strain on them. And then we also provided a private land buffer. If the private landowner was actively managing the trees on their property, we had agreement with the Forest Service where we could come in and cut a three-hundred-foot buffer on the Forest Service side to try to minimize those impacts on the private landowner. And then we had, also in our agreement, we had, we were able to go in and do some landscape tree cuts. We'd go into upcoming timber sales, try to minimize the impacts of the pine beetle so that there's more trees that could be salvaged and logged. And then also, we were able to do some salvage logging, small sales, whether those in our landscape areas or the private lands. Those infested trees still had value if they weren't completely brown and dead. And we could salvage some of those trees and get them into the mill and get them utilized. So overall, we cut almost fifty-five thousand trees over the five years there. Here's the financial investment with the partners in the working group, almost eighteen million dollars per year. And then total in the five years, almost ninety million dollars invested. And then down below there, you can see the county's investment. We did get a large grant from the state. That was money approved by the state legislature to help out the counties on their efforts. And then we also tapped our Title III and Title II dollars. And then Nyman Timber Company donated quite a bit to our, to our program as well. And then the small number there at the end is the county general, twenty-two thousand. So overall, we invested one point two million dollars in Pennington County on the pine beetle epidemic. Just talk briefly on the collaboration of the working group. Formed a lot of good working relationships, became very efficient and effective in what we did. But I gotta tell you, it wasn't all pats on the backs and congratulating each other. You're accountable when you walked into those meetings. If you weren't doing something that was effective or efficient, you'd get called out in the meeting. Some of those meetings got heated, particularly between the industry and the Forest Service. But in the end, we came into agreement and kept it in-house and figured it out, how to get it done most effectively. So now, as we move all this epidemic, how do we create the forest to be more resilient to future pine beetle attacks? That's the goal now. So this picture here is a good indication of where we're at on the forest. You can still see that we still have mature green trees left out there, the pine beetles didn't get them all. And then you can see a number of dead, dead trees standing there and some that have been snapped off. But then look below there, all that flush of new trees coming in, those jackpines. Another twenty-three year, twenty to thirty years when those trees grow up, that's gonna be the next epidemic. So that's what we need to address now. As I mentioned, the conservation leaders, they're still active, they meet twice a year. Forest supervisors, Forest Supervisor calls those meetings. And from that conservation leaders' group, as we wind down out of this epidemic and we kind of close, wrap up the mountain pine beetle working group, we've identified two new partnerships to address the emerging issues on the forest. And those two issues are the forest and fuel loading with all the dead trees and the new vegetation growth coming in, we got an ever-loading fire fuel risk out there, ripe for a wildfire any day now. And then as that canopy opened up, we got a flush of more invasive weeds. Not that we didn't have a problem before, but it's even worse now. As I mentioned, prolific regen, Black Hills can grow trees, it can grow a lot of trees. And the Black Hills, the Forest Service is trying to address that. They estimate that we need to do sixty thousand acres of pine regen, pre-commercial thinning. It's expensive though, it's about six to four hundred dollars an acre to thin. Right now, they're only getting about twenty thousand acres then. So they're far from their objective, funding obviously being the issue there. And then the invasive weeds, as I mentioned, this is the problem we're facing out in the forest now. As those trees fall down, it becomes tougher and tougher to access these areas that have the invasive weeds. So trying to get in there and treat those is becoming more and more difficult. And then our road right-of-ways, we're addressing that in Pennington County by our stewardship agreement that we signed a few years ago with the Forest Service, creating those shaded field breaks. A picture says a thousand words, you can see this, this is Idolized Mountain Road. This is our first pilot project that we're doing underneath the agreement. You can see the before picture there and then the after picture. How we've really opened up that canopy now. It's gonna provide a safe egress for the residents there trying to get out in an emergency situation. Hopefully define, hopefully provide a fire break there that they can defend a wildfire. It's gonna get more sunlight down onto that road service, so less wintertime maintenance for our highway department. More, more field of view for oncoming cars and then also wildlife, so many benefits there. And it also will provide a more resilient stand in the future for when that next outbreak is. Hopefully, we're not cutting as many trees along our right-of-ways. Here's, here's a list of future roads that we'd like to do. Like I said, Idolized Mountain Road is the first one. All told, if we do all these roads on the list, we'll have over three thousand acres of shaded field break cut in within our county to provide a safety, a more safe egress for our residents. Forest Service recently held a media event on Friday up on Idolized, talking about our project. We had all three stations show up there, and we had, all three of them did a good job uncovering that. All I got, I just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at.
Any questions for Mr. Guffey?
Madam Chair, I do.
Commissioner DeSanto.
What, did we come to a conclusion on what the primary reason for the epidemic was?
Yep, like I mentioned, the Black Hills grows trees.
Overturting, overcrowding is the word.
Yep, and throughout the history, we've had, we've had the mountain pine beetle and wildfire as the two main sources of thinning the forest. Now, the effectiveness of our fire departments now, fires is except on when we have the severe fires like Jasper and Grizzly Gulch. So we don't have that thinning there anymore. Luckily, like I said, we still have a forest industry, but it's just, just basically a cause of having too many mature trees, and it's, it's a predator-prey relationship. It's no different than like on our invasive weeds, our non-native weeds. We're bringing in their native pests from over in Europe and stuff to try to introduce here, to try to keep our weeds in check. While if pine beetle ever got established over in Europe or something that was non-native, they'd bring the pine beetle over to keep the trees in check. So it's doing what it's supposed to do, is to keep the trees in check. But like I said, we put fires out so fast now, and we're not keeping up with the thinning on our, on our timber sales, that we just got too many trees, basically.
Is that because of low demand or because of environmental pressures?
Both.
Or environmental group pressures?
It could be, because if you look at the other forests, and like I said, we're- we're lucky we still have a timber industry. A lot of those western states, they've been driven out of the forest just by the environmental groups a lot of times. So then they have nothing there to combat, so that the impacts are a lot worse, so. And, and I should mention that Black Hills has been the number one producing timber sale forest in the nation for the two years running. So that, that says something for this small forest to be number one in the nation, so.
Is there a possibility we could create some sort of national public announcement that we need to thin the forests and that we need to cut timber and that that actually saves our timber and doesn't
Lose our forests.
Right. Cause the problems that a lot of groups think, such as the groups in Idaho that are preventing, you know, pounding railroad stakes into trees and so forth to prevent loggers from cutting them down.
Yep. And that's, that's part of our partnership is to continue to educate people that it's important that we have healthy forests through, through timber sales and thinning and stuff like that. So we're, we're, we're trying to get that message out as best we can.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Great information.
Commissioner Verbe?
Scott guarantees me that pine beetle epidemic is over, so I'm not gonna spray this year.
No guarantees.
I'm, I'm gonna spray.
Yeah. Like I said, it's a native pest, so it's, you have those high-value trees that you don't wanna lose. I mean, I would, I'd keep spraying, but there's no guarantees that it won't hit it.
Thank you, Scott, for what you do.
Little history, about twenty-five, about twenty-five years ago, the Sierra Club got their way with Clinton administration and they quit logging. Black Hills got overcrowded, extremely overcrowded with trees and nature doesn't like to be overcrowded. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto.
Thank you. I, I noticed you have your picture of the lovely Canadian thistle at the top here. Is there anything the public can do to help? I mean, this is a huge battle, obviously.
As far as, yes. Obviously, on their private lands, control it. We do have a cost share program that's available to landowners to help them out on controlling the noxious weeds. As far as on the, on Forest Services and stuff like that, you know, notify your congressional reps and tell them how important it is that invasive weeds gets, gets their attention and gets the adequate funding to control them. You know, weeds aren't exciting, they're not sexy like fire and stuff like that, so they, they don't get the attention that sometimes they need. And it's, it's a serious threat to our, to our ecosystem in the Black Hills and all over.
They get your attention when you walk through them with shorts on them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to thank Mr. Goffey for everything he does. If you can tell, he has a passion for what he does and he works well with all the different services in the Black Hills to get these things that he does done for weed and pests or trees, anything to do with that, here's your man right here. So we appreciate everything you do. And again, I've seen your work and you're very innovative of how you work together with people, Mr. Goffey, so we appreciate everything you do.
You bet. Thank you.
And.
I just wanted to make the same thing. Scott is, is, you know, I worked for the byproduct for twenty-eight years at Marilock Cabinets and we relied heavily on sawdust and saw shavings and so forth. I'm sure you've worked with Wayne Bungee and Richard Crowe's passed away, but they were great advocates of forest management and, and I appreciate you doing all the work that you've done, because we do have a good industry here in this area.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I recall, our, our board meeting, weed meeting last, didn't the board recommend that all four other commissioners spend a day spraying weeds?
Hard to do.
I think that was George's suggestion. We can figure something out.
I tried, but he came back.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goffey. Okay. Number nineteen is proposed resolution for twenty-eighteen legislation. Number A is a resolution to support clarification of definition of real property for a velarium taxation purposes. Shannon, do you have some discussion on this?
No, not really. I'm here for questions.
Okay. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak?
You kinda knew the answer before you asked that question.
Thank you, but I think there may be sometimes more than you, but I did see your ad. I'm gonna get off for just a second of the motion, but I saw your nice ad for Sheridan Lake Road, or Sheridan Lake Arena. And I love that arena and I love that lake, so that's pretty cool.
It came out pretty good, but I'm getting grief all over town.
It's becoming fa- famous. And I didn't know you were in the Navy, so I thought that was pretty cool, too.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mark. Okay.
Good morning. I'm Mark Rutterforth and I'm here to just comment on the proposed resolution.
Yes, sir.
As I read this thing, what we're trying to do is extrapolate the Rushmore Shadows decision to prove intent for any park model in the county, or in the state for that matter. And I think that's a stretch. What you really wanna do is get rid of the RV designation and classify them as mobile homes. I know that's what Mr. Rittenberger would like to do. And that's really what you're asking them to do, because the resolution, the way it's just written, asks the state legislature to decide intent for anyone who owns a park model and happens to bring it into the state of South Dakota. And they want, and you want them to find that that intent is to leave it here permanently for the economic life of that unit, so that you can tax it, just like the Rushmore Shadows case. So I'm not sure how you can reach that conclusion, just 'cause somebody brings a park model. How long are they gonna be here? What test do we use to determine that? Does everybody have to go to court? You know, that's, so anyway, that's the main thing that jumped out at me on this resolution.
Any questions for Mr. Mark?
But would you be
Commissioner Verbe?
Would you be comfortable if all references to Rushmore Shadows were removed from the
Well, not necessarily. I mean, to be frank with you, I think when you cite that example as a reason why you want to have the legislature clarify this, legislator and any, any attorney is gonna look at it and say, "Well, the courts have already given you clarification. The statute's clear. It's an RV. And in these circumstances, which, which you recite yourself directly from the ruling, under these specific set of circumstances, they are improvements to real estate because they're constructively attached to the real estate." There's no question about that. And that's not what I'm here arguing. What I am arguing is that you cannot apply that court decision to every park model, because every situation is different. So if that's the clarification you want, do one of two things. Either say, "Hey, we need classification on all RVs, not just park models." Or we need to remove the RV designation in the statute for a park model and make it a mobile home. That's, that's the way I see it. And, you know, I would be glad for that clarification as well, because as a, you know, I'm, I'm a legitimate businessman, I'm not trying to break a law. But the way I read the laws, you can't tax it. We disagree. We're gonna get their resolve, but, you know, it, I understand there's some confusion, but this, this can extend to fifth wheels. How long can you leave a fifth wheel parked in an RV spot at a resort, an RV park? Or if it's on private property? Or if it's on a leased lot in a mobile home park? Are they eligible to be taxed as real estate? Now, Mr. Rittenberger goes through and says, "Well, this one looks like it's gonna be here for a while. This one doesn't, so I'm gonna tax A and not B." That's not equitable either. So anyway, that's, that's the way I see the resolution is.
Well, Madam Chair, at a, at a minimum, I, I can't vote for a resolution that's got Rushmore Shadows in it, because I think that's totally irrelevant to the question we're asking.
Did you give that input to Holly when she was making this, George, or?
At last meeting, I made it very clear that Rushmore Shadows had nothing to do with this question.
So when you saw this resolution, did you call Holly and say that?
I did not, no.
Okay. Commissioner Lacroix?
I think this is the start of the process that we went through, through the border of equalization. I, I don't disagree with some of the stuff that you come up with. I mean, I, fifth wheels, I think, are different from, from these other models. And I think times are changing and some of these homes that are coming through, and I call them homes because people are living in them. And that, and I, I understand where Shannon's coming from and I understand the difference between Rushmore, that's why we're starting the discussion with, with this. Because you're absolutely right, a fifth wheel is different from a park model and some people leave them parked just as long as that. And I can see your anger and resentment you get from, you think the unfairness and so forth. That's why we're asking for some clarification. Basically, legislature's gonna have to come up with a task force to take a look at this and find a fair way to do it, because, you know, it's trending that these little homes are, are, are coming. You know, I, I mean, it is. Are they made, designed to be, yes, they're, they're licensed to be, like, I got title on my mobile home yesterday. You know what I'm saying? I, I could come in here and say, "You can't tax me on my mobile home," because it's, you know, it's, but I'm not here to argue, I'm just trying to help. And, and I think we're looking for just as much clarification as you are. And I think that's what the intent of, of this resolution is, is to, is get those conversations talking. And I think we'll all be up at the next session testifying on what we believe and what, what needs to be done. And maybe that's where we need to all go.
Sure. And, you know, the reason why I bring up the, you know, just get them reclassified so that they're not an RV. That, to me, is the simplest approach if the legislature is agreeable to that, because then you don't have to answer the questions, "Well, you know, the Rushmore Shadows case and the reason why we're here today was all about intent." Okay? So how is that different from the intent of a guy in a fifth wheel who's gonna leave it there in a park and, you know, maybe till the thing falls down? So, so that's why I'd say it really goes to intent and I don't think... Anyway. I won't, I won't repeat. I'm sorry.
So, Mr., Mr. Mark, by chance, did you appeal the decision on the park models to peer?
Well, personally, I don't have any grounds for appeal, because you granted my request. The, the only park model that I had assigned to me was my dealer inventory model and we took that off the rolls, so I have no legal standing for appeal. I can tell you that the other people that were in the meeting have appealed, some, some to peer to the hearing examiners and some are going to Circuit Court.
Okay. I guess that's what I would like to know is what happened in peer and, and the court cases, too, just to see where this is going.
I talked to the officer of hearing examiners in peer yesterday and there was no appeal yet.
Friday is the postmark deadline.
Yeah, so they, they do have another week yet. You, you think there will be appeal?
Yeah.
That, that's interesting for me to know, that, that helps us plan.
And also the court case, because I'd like to know, bottom line, I'd like this resolved as well. And to do the resolution, knowing that there is gonna be court cases and what peer's gonna do is gonna be a big decision on moving forward with this, because if they're gonna do something different than we're doing, then that would be null and void of what we're trying to get done here.
I'd like to see it go to court, we get another decision, but we've already had one decision from the Supreme Court. The legislature, if the legislature takes it up, won't, won't happen until next January and then not take effect till July first. So maybe a, at least Circuit Court case could be done before all of that happens.
Okay.
And certainly, OHE will be done before that. OHE is done this summer.
Thank you. Jay, did you have something to say?
If I could, just briefly. Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. We're in actually agreement, you know, when you think about, the most inefficient way to get a decision is to run something through all the court systems. It takes months and years and then it's very fact-specific to that one situation. And so the next time a situation slightly changes, then there's an argument, again, based on the current law. And you find yourself in court and all the way to the Supreme Court. Clearly an inefficient way to do business. If we had clarification in the law where it made no sense to appeal, because you don't have a case, it's clear. So I always advocate for clear laws to address these kinds of issues. So one of your recommendations was maybe define recreational park trailers as mobile homes. That'd be wonderful. Maybe say that they only have to be registered and tagged like a regular vehicle and can never be taxed as real property. Fantastic. Make a law that's clear, so we all don't have to argue about, mine didn't have skirting, mine did have skirting, mine was there six months, mine was there seven months. Every time you have a slight change, we're gonna be back here at Boards of Equalization and be talking about appeals and, because there's differences of opinion.
Well, have you seen the resolution, Jay? And you're in favor of it?
Yeah, I've seen it and it could easily be rewritten any way you want. And what you're really, if somebody set a task force, in my mind, that's what you're really asking for, is the legislature to get excited about this issue, form a task force, or at least have a, a group of folks who are willing to sit down and try to draft some language to make something clear, one way or the other. I don't know if it's the board's opinion that you want these things to always be real property. That's kinda how the resolution reads right now. If the board doesn't care, they just want clarity, the legislature could make them a mobile home, could make them just a car, could make them real property. There's three options right there. Then maybe the, the resolution could be cut in half the length that it is and just say, "Legislature, please look at this and decide how you wanna tax them."
That, Madam Chairman, that, that was my original thought, too, is let's make it clear, I don't, I guess I don't care if they're taxed or not taxed and licensed, that's fine, too, I guess. But let's make it one way or the other, real simple, real fast.
And you gotta have people that are, that are interested enough in the issue to say, "Yeah, we oughta do something about this." And then sat down with some options in front of them and go, "What can we do? What can we work out? And then what can the legislature ultimately pass?"
I guess I thought that was what the resolution was, that we were doing, and that we gave direction last time on Holly to do one, so she did it. And then we did it again and said, "We'd like to change some stuff on it and did this." So if there's a whole different direction for this board than what's on here, then Holly's not getting clear enough direction if she keeps putting different things down on this that people either aren't looking at it ahead of time or want something different. So I'm trying to figure out how we get to this resolution, so it's done right, because we've tried twice and we're not really getting resolution from the board in order to move forward on this. How about that?
Madam Chair, can I ask Commissioner Buskerd a question or two?
Commissioner Buskerd, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
You've been on the resolutions committee and are, and maybe you still are, what, what's the process they go through?
Well, process, yeah, as obviously it goes to the, the council, uh, and council, the Black Hills Association, then goes to, to the, the state board. They, my experience is, the shorter the resolution, the clearer the resolution, the more chance it has of passing, the more chance that the legislature will look at it. They, they have hundreds of bills presented to them and they don't have time to sit and listen or read all of them. So I, I like Mark's idea of, let's either make them mobile homes or, or not.
Okay, so my, my
It's simple.
My suggestion, board, would be, Buskerd, if you're willing to work with Holly to come up with a resolution, that's simple, short and to the point by the next meeting.
Sure. I mean, and I want some, I think you gave us some of your ideas already, didn't you, Mark?
I had a second question for Commissioner, or a follow-up question, is, does a committee typically rewrite what's presented to them, or they just take what's there and, and go?
Typically, take what's there, unless they really don't like a part of it, then, then they'll, they'll change it. That's, that's at the state board level. Once it gets to the legislature, it's fair game.
Oh, I understand.
It's fair game for anything.
Hey, guys. So the motion was that Mr. Buskerd works with Holly to find a resolution for park, park models for the next meeting.
Okay.
Anybody wanna second that?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Discussion, please.
Well, thanks, Ron, for taking that out. I think you got volunteered on it, but I mean
He'll be good at it.
I, I think
I, I think we do need some clarification. I mean, this looks, I like the work that Holly did, but personally, I do, I have the same concerns as you mentioned, you know, when you, fifth wheels to, to a place that's placed, that's not gonna move for a year. You know, most mobile home parks are parks that I know of, 21 days or so many days they move. I understand that. Others that are purchased and, and brought to a property and not really meant to move, I mean, intentions, whatever you, you know, I'm just, I'm just kinda giving Ron some discussion, but those are some of my concerns, Ron. I mean, I'd be happy to sit down with you.
Did you have a motion?
So it's been a motion and a, and a second. And so any of the concerns you have, guys, get them to Holly or Buschard ahead of time. So we're not up here again trying to figure out if Mr. Rutherford has, doesn't have to come up for six more meetings till we decide on a resolution. So, um, he has things to do as well. And I think Mr. Buschard's pretty awesome at doing resolutions, so.
And I can tell you, Mark is, is very busy, 'cause my wife and I have been out there a couple of times to see him and buy a park model, and he's never...
Alrighty. So there's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I might ask a question. When I read the, um, the packet for today's meeting.
Yes, sir.
One of the items in there was, and I don't see it on this agenda, so I don't know if it went past the ranking center or what, um, the PUD for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto for the Summer Creek property.
Nope, that's on the, that would be on the, um, Planning Commission, sir, next.
Okay, but I didn't see that one on the agenda, too. So is that upcoming still?
Not on today's agenda.
It might have been last...
There was one for them on the consent calendar for last commission meeting.
Yes.
But not for today's meeting.
I, I thought I saw it in today's packet. Okay. Um, well, let me, let me ask a question. I know it's not the right time, but you have in there PUD conditions. You're allowing them RV spaces, but you specifically prohibit them from placing park models in there. So my question is, if you're trying to put me out of business, or all of the dealers out of business, or what? Because...
Did they agree with it? That would be my bottom line. If they agreed with the stipulation, then that would be of their choice not...
They didn't wanna fight it because of everything else going on, but it was inserted by county staff, and I just wonder why.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, you can run up there if you'd like, Mr. Rutherford. There, there. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your discussion today. Next, we are on another proposed legis, uh, resolution. Item 19B, please.
Yes, Commissioners, this is just a simple change, um, that we're requesting in law to make the conservation districts responsible for the publication and payment of their own financial reports. Currently, the counties are responsible for that. And conservation districts are elected directors, and we feel they should be responsible for that. So...
Okay, discussion on this resolution. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I, good idea. My problem is, conservation districts will just add it to what they want from us every year, and so we're gonna pay it anyway.
That's what I said, but...
But I could be wrong.
Ms. Julie.
That, that is true, that Pennington County does pay the majority, if not all, of the budget for the two conservation districts. Um, that is not necessarily true across the state. And our belief is that other elected boards, other governments, which they really are, to, to quite an extent, we just are required to fund them. They could levy their own if the law was changed. They need to be responsible for their own financials. This is the only other organization, or government, or entity, whatever you wanna call them, that we have to publish and pay for it. So yes, if they have to pay to publish it, then yes, if Pennington decides at budget time that yes, you're going to pay for it, at least it's them that are responsible. We have to call these people. We have to remind them to get it in. We have to reformat it so it's, it's, it's in a reasonable order, if it's even correct, once we get it. It just shouldn't be our responsibility. And because we publish it as a county, people think it's us. And it is not you.
What's the cost, Ms. Julie?
It ranges depending upon how they send it in and whether we spend staff time to reformat it. It ranges from $60 to $250.
Well, for...
$1,560.
For the year?
For 2017, we spent $1,560 out of the commission budget to pay for their publication.
Out of the commission budget, how much?
$1,560.
And how's that help your budget?
It doesn't.
Doesn't?
Doesn't.
That's what I'm saying.
Us people, again, think it's county, and it's not. We have no responsibility to how they spend their money, how much money they have or don't have, what they do with their money. We just get a budget. The board in the past, uh, the law used to say, you shall give them what they ask for. Now it's you may give them. And in the last budget, uh, you gave them every penny that they requested.
So my question would be, like, kinda like Mr. Buschard's, is, so, um, why don't we just either have them make sure they put it in their budget instead of putting it in Holly's, or ours, however you say it, if that's what we wanna do? It's, it seems like a pretty easy solution. Even make them add it to their budget, or we say, you know, from now on, you publish your...
Move approval, Madam Chair, for the resolution.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Thank you.
Number 20, do you need a five-minute break, board, or are you ready to move forward?
Sure.
Five-minute break, please. Their motion?
Go move.
But, um, items from planning?
Oh, we gotta go.
Whew, I'm starting to sweat again. Okay, we're gonna go into Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion, please?
Go move.
Second by Buschard, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. PJ.
Okay, PJ, Count of Director Planning Department. The only item on the Board of Adjustment today is Item A, Variant 1709, to reduce the minimum required rear and side yard setbacks from 25 feet to 20 feet in the low-density residential district. The applicants and agents are in the off, uh, audience today. The subject property is 0.15 acres. Its future and current zoning is low-density residential. It takes access off of High Seega Drive. It's vacant of any structures at this time. There's a picture of the property, um, on the screens. There is a 10-foot wide platted, uh, walkway and utility easement to Rapid Creek along the eastern property line. Uh, if we look right here, you can see it there. It's labeled number five. Um, right now, as far as the agent and the, um, the applicant's lawyers can determine is they're not really sure who has, um, ownership of that. Um, so they don't have the option right now of, of purchasing that right of way or vacating it and having more buildable space on their property. So they're looking here today for this variance from 25 feet to 20 feet. The concern with this one is the amount of flood plain and floodway on the property. If you look at the screens, you can see in blue, uh, there's an existing buildable area, and in red is the proposed buildable area, which requires a 20-foot setback from the rear and the side property lines. There is a two-page letter from their agent in your packets, which kind of explains the history of the request from the applicants. Um, this was routed to an impairmental review, and nothing really of concern came back, as majority of the concerns that staff would have with this property will be addressed through the building permit process. And most of that is going to be during the floodplain development permit, that if you were to put any structure in the floodway, you have to show a no rise. And that will be done by a no rise certificate through probably KTM Design Solutions. Uh, the app, the applicant does have the option through our ordinance of building a smaller residence, a 20 by 20 residence, but they're proposing a 29 by 35 residence. Uh, there are four criteria that the Board of Adjustment needs to determine are met. The first is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness and topography, exist. Staff has verified through a site visit that the lot size and topography do inhibit buildable area on the subject property. And as a significant portion of it is in the special flood hazard area with floodway. The second item is that the variance is not granted use, which is otherwise excluded from this particular district, and the applicant's request is not, uh, would not grant a use, which is otherwise excluded. Third item is that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of zoning ordinances would, would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application would require the applicants to build a 25-foot setback. The applicant has indicated that there is buildable area to accommodate a single-family residence that could meet the required setbacks. But again, that's gonna be a smaller, uh, square-footage residence. The fourth item is that granting a variance is not contrary to public interest and is in harmony with the general purpose and the intent of the zoning district. Um, as of the staff reports, um, we received one phone call in opposition of this from a, from a neighbor. Um, just wanted to basically say that they would object to another structure being down on High Seega, um, Drive. Um, if approved, the setback would all, would allow for a 20-foot setback in a low-density residential district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. And if the Board of Adjustment approves Variant 1709, staff does not recommend any conditions of be included, as any requirements will be addressed during the building permit process.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Go ahead and come up. Sharon and Durant. Hi, folks.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, you go ahead and state your case and why you'd like this variance.
Um, yes, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity. I was just gonna, just mention a little background on us and what our intent is of this property. We are, have a farm, um, south of Bismarck, North Dakota, so we're about five and a half hours from here. And so we're looking at, we purchased this property, looking at it as kind of a retreat to get away from the farm and to come down here. So our intent is to put a structure there that we can come down to periodically and, and spend time here in this beautiful area. Um, one of the things we wanted to be cognizant of is that we understand the beauty of that area, and we wanna make sure that the structure that we put there is, fits in the area, and also is, um, pleasing to the neighbors. And so we don't wanna be putting something there that may detract the value and, and that type of thing. Um, minors, we are familiar with where we live. Uh, we live along the Missouri River, and so we are aware of people and see the impact of people coming out and building and putting things that maybe don't fit in the area. And so we're very aware of that, and we wanna be good neighbors to the people there and not put something that's, that's visually unattractive. Um, I guess the, the reason for the variance and going through this process, because we're not familiar with the floodway, but, um, working with our engineer, is that, as I explained, we can put a structure there within the existing footprint, it's my understanding. Um, but it would require, and this is maybe getting a little more technical, and maybe the engineer can speak more to that, but it's more, um, the front of the house will have piers, um, in the flood pa, in the floodway. And the way that the lot is platted now, our structure would have to be, have kinda odd angles in it. And so with this variance, it would allow us to square up the property so that, I guess it could be a more uniform structure with fewer piers that are out in the floodway and hopefully prevent less, um, problems in the event of a 100-year flood, is my understanding. I don't know, Durant, did you have anything?
No.
I think she got it. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Question for PJ.
PJ, Commissioner DeSanto has a question.
Yep. What type of, uh, septic system is gonna be used?
Yep, I think I'll have the engineer address that. We've already talked about that in the hallway. We anticipated that.
Good morning. My name's Mike Tuohy. I'm with KTM Design Solutions. Um, we have gone through a process with both the county and the state. Um, on the left side of the structure, you'll see a small box with some hatching around it, uh, 10-foot buffer from the, um, western property line. That is a, a septic tank, or not a septic tank, a holding tank. Um, we have received verbal approval from both the county and the state. Uh, the only requirement that they'll have is they want it lined very similar to, like how we'd line new mantles in Rapid City, so it prevents the leakage. Uh, very similar. On the opposite side of the structure is the cistern, uh, same hatching, both of them meet the setbacks. Um, and that also would have, uh, lining inside that so that we're not getting leakage outside. So once it's, once it's installed into the ground and connected, they'll come back in and they'll put a coating very similar to like a Rhino lining type on the inside.
Okay. Okay, good. That's always my primary concern is...
That was, that was one of our big ones.
...into our streams.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve the variance.
Motion to approve by Buschard?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? Commissioner Farby?
I'm making that motion despite the fact that they're from North Dakota.
Commissioner Farby.
Before you ask it, you'd like to do some...
Okay, hold on just a second. Commissioner Farby?
That, uh, assume 10 feet from property line, what does that really mean? The assumption, is it inches or feet? What are we talking about?
For the, uh, holding tank?
No, right there, it says on the, the lower right, left-hand corner, assumed 10 feet from property line.
If, PJ, can we go back to the full-site drawing?
In your, in your packet, you have the full-site drawing that shows where that is referencing. It just, this is a snippet of that drawing from your packet.
Can you show us what paper that is, PJ?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
This one?
This one. And we do have a larger portion of it on, up on the screen.
Thank you. Do you understand that, George?
I understand. That tells me nobody knows where the property line is. Now, is the assumption within inches or feet?
No, the assumption is we have the property line located. What we do not have located is the existing drain field on the other property. Um, we've done some research on that, and we found that it was installed back in the early 2000s, which to me would have gone through the permitting processes that you guys have laid out, uh, at the county level. And because we do not know exactly where that septic field ends on the property to the west, we have assumed that it met the requirements of DNR and the county, and it would have had to have been 10 feet off the property line at that time. Without digging it up, we have no way of verifying the actual location of that field. Um, but that is the neighbor's, that is the neighbor's field.
Okay.
Okay, another, Madam Chair, on a request for comments, number K, but that's just for planning and zoning. It says the county. Who, who is, who is speaking there on item K?
Yep, thank you for pointing that out. Item K is actually not supposed to be under, it's actually more of an analysis than, um, request for comments. It's just got put into the outline that way.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and, and another question is, uh, state rules say four tenths of an acre for, well, a whole acre, if water, if you have individual water and sewer, and if you have common one or the other, then it's four tenths of an acre. 0.15 is a long ways from that. So I'm guessing that, that need approval to vary it from those rules, those state rules, before this goes forward.
And you're, and you're, you're addressing what will be looked at during the building permit process, correct? This is just a variance to the setbacks.
I was kinda putting the horse before the, uh, cart before the horse. Uh, I'm, I'm thinking that you need a variance from peer before, before we can give a variance.
We, we have spoken with both the state.
Yep.
Scott Hippel with the state, and TJ and, and PJ's office. And they have seen this layout, and both have given verbal approval, um, that, that we would be allowed the variances. Um, I, I have a, I can forward Scott, uh, PJ an email from Scott Hippel saying they would agree with what we're proposing.
I have a substitute motion, Madam Chair, that we postpone this until such time as we get the variance from peer for, for onsite wastewater.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, um...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
The request is before you is a variance to setbacks, which is gonna determine what they will and won't be able to build on the property.
Right.
Regardless of whether this is approved or not, what Commissioner Farby is proposing will have to be done anyway.
I agree. So this is just the first step of the process, and it's not putting the cart before the horse. Actually, you gotta know if you have these setbacks in these areas before you even put the water, the sewer in there, guys. So if that doesn't work with peer, he's shut down anyway. Does that make sense? So he will be shut down one way or another, uh, and it doesn't have to be, um, from us by a setback. So...
So there's not a particular order that this should really go in, that we're...
No, this is act, uh, Mr. DeSanto, this is the first order of business that you do. And then, then, if I'm correct, PJ, this is what you do first, and then you do the next step.
Yeah. And the, uh, agent has done a lot of legwork prior to even be, even getting to this point. We started this six to eight months ago.
I was gonna say, almost 10.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, in that... Then, in that case, I'll withdraw my second.
Well, no, no, the state rules, which are the same as law, say you have to have an acre. So that should be the first step. We shouldn't be doing the second step before we do the first step. If pier doesn't give a variance, if we don't have a variance in hand, we shouldn't be giving this variance.
Because it will shut down the project, it was what we're saying, Mr. Farby, either way. This has always been the step we've done from planning, is to go through this process to see if they can even put a house there. Then if they can, and they have to, if I'm correct, get a building permit, and before they get that building permit, they will not be able to get that building permit, Mr. Farby, if they don't have pier and TJ's approval on this paper for the next step. So you, it could still be shut down if this is not correct. We do have one more person that would like to speak on this. Yes, sir.
Hi, folks. My name is James Tursa, and I live at 13274 Tomah Ridge Road, which is located just above the property that's on the map there. I've lived there for 28 years, and I actually, I remember that when the Rapid City flood went through in 1972, that this whole area was flooded, and the people that lived down below the creek, on the creek at the time, had to go up and stay in Merle Hilton's house, which is up on the hill where my property is. And there was no electricity or no water for, or electricity or telephone for, I don't know how many days. And so it didn't wipe out the houses that are currently there, but it did go right through the middle of them, and that area by the creek is actually, is in a 100-year floodplain. My house, which is located 30 feet above that lot, is also in the 100-year floodplain. So, and the definition of 100-year floodplain is that you may have multiple floods in 100 years. It's not just one, many. So I wanted to let you know that. And also, let's see, what else did I want to ask you? I'd also like to make sure that I have access to the creek. You mentioned that there's a 10-foot right-of-way to get down to the creek. And I'm disabled, and I also have equipment that I could get down there, but I'd also like to enjoy that view of the creek. Part of this lot is off to the side of my property, but when I look at it from my deck, it will take away some of the view of my, of the creek and the beauty of it, in which, you know, that's just the way things go. But with the lot being only 0.15 acres, when I built my house 28 years ago, I had to have at least an acre and a half to build a septic tank and a drain field by a, Mr. Werner was his name, it was he on the commission at that time. And I had to combine four lots together that I bought from Judge Andrew Bog with a well to even build up there, because otherwise they were not going to let me, it didn't qualify. So the small amount of acreage at 0.15, you'd think that's way too small, and like one of the commissioners said, was the state, you have to have at least, what, one acre to build? Yeah. And so that makes sense to me, that that is the case. One of the things that wasn't mentioned, he said that they're going to put in a cistern. Well, the reason they put in a cistern is because their lot, every point on their lot is within 100 feet of anybody else's well. And that's a state law, where you can't drill another well if it's within 100 feet. So my well isn't close, but Clarence Werner's and, well, it'd be Levon Grace, but her son lives in Larry Grace, and their well is located down by the creek area, just kitty-corner from this lot. So that's another, the reason why they're putting in a cistern. As far as the height and all that, I'm concerned about that, because if they do, are allowed to build, then that would take away, like I said, the beauty or the looks of me and the creek. I mean, I'll still be able to hear the creek, but I won't be able to see the beauty of it. And I saw two geese up there with little goslings yesterday nesting, and, you know, I'm going, you know, is that going to go away, because there's another house on the creek? So, I guess that's all I have today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Can you address, sir, the engineer, some of his concerns on the cistern and stuff, and then also the access? He said he had an access issue. Is there an access issue?
Okay, so if I understand the access, it would be what is labeled, item five, would be the hatched area?
Yep.
That's the 10-foot wide walkway easement that was planted along with this lot in 1963. It was not dedicated to any certain person. There is no ownership. If you pull it up in Rapid Map, it doesn't even have a zoning color to it. It is, for all we can find so far...
That's remaining?
It's, it's the balance of something.
Okay.
And, and we had discussed, the applicant and I had discussed about potentially trying to acquire that, because there's no visual path going through there. It is very mowed. It does not appear that anything's been in there in the, in the five or six times that I've been up to the lot this summer. We chose to go this route instead and ask for this variance. Couple things to point out, the, with the cistern and the holding tank is, again, one of the things that state code allows for is everything prior to 1975, everything planted prior to 1975 falls under a grandfather clause and does not have a lot size requirements. This lot was planted in 1963, and I believe that's part of the reason we can't find the ownership. The cistern and the holding tank have both been reviewed by the city and, or by the county, and the state both have approved through email to us, which I forwarded on to the county, I never thought to put it in the packet, that they would agree with what we're proposing. The big concern that I hear with the lot is that it's the floodplain. Both the holding tank and the, again, will be lined, the holding tank and the cistern will be lined. They will be not visible. You'll see the 27-inch manhole cover for the pumper's access.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
May I correct the record?
Hold on, nope. Hold on just a sec. You can, George, but let LaCroy go, then DeSanto, then George, please. Mr. LaCroy.
I just, you know, I struggle with this. I understand this is part of the process moving forward. Maybe PJ can help me out, but you know, 10 years ago, I was on the Plumb Land Committee with Marsha Alkins and Tom Hennessy, and we went through a lot of the stuff. We raised it. So I really struggle with anybody building in, granting the variance to even go past what we're supposed to do. You know, I understand what you guys are trying to do, but you know, we lost 264 people during the flood. And part of it was, was from that area, a lot of the stuff come down and blocked up the bridges and so forth. And so with just that in mind myself, I struggle with allowing the variance to build even closer to it. That's my personal, and maybe, you know, I understand, I was reading through it, this is just the first step. You know, it's going to have to go through the FEMA floodplain and may come back to us. Maybe PJ can help me out with that.
PJ, if you want to explain that he's actually moving further away from the floodway, but...
Well, what they're going to have to do is, it's not advisable to build in a floodway. We'd like to prohibit any construction in the floodway, so would FEMA, but FEMA doesn't have that regulation, and we don't have that regulation. There are ways to be able to construct in a floodway, and that was where, through a no-ride certificate done by a certified engineer, that it's 0.00, which is in, I think, K, is where I, well, I put it somewhere in the staff report. But if they can prove that there's no rise one mile up and downstream from the subject location, then you're okay. It's not impossible to do, but it's difficult to do. But we don't prohibit any, we don't prohibit structures in a floodway yet.
So this isn't any way in the floodway? It's moving it out of the floodway, that's why they need the five-foot variance?
No, ma'am, they're going to have pillars directly in the floodway.
Okay.
The house will be in part on stilts?
Yeah.
Very similar to like if you were living on the beach and the house is elevated 10 feet. We're doing the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I understood that part when I was reading through with the pillars, and I still struggle with it, because I know we put some restrictions on the homeowners further down on the stream to where, you know, they can't add on, you know, the structure is what it is, and no building in certain areas and so forth, and that's why I'm kind of struggling with, am I doing an exception for somebody else? You know, and we got other homeowners who'd like to do other things, and we're not allowing them to do it, but we're going to let a new building get built?
Okay.
That's what I'm struggling with.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I'm assuming that the lot size requirement that was changed in 1975 was due to septic field, or drain field, correct, is the requirement of drain field? And when you have a holding tank, that's not an issue?
I believe, I believe the issue with the holding tank and the cistern allow for the smaller lot size. I mean, the, this gentleman made the statement that we're too close to the well. The issue that we ran into is that the existing drain field for the future, or for the existing lot, does not allow us the separation. And so that's where we had to go to, for the Shermaesters to put a well on their lot. And that's the reason we ended up with the septic. They can't drill a well because of the existing septic. So the cistern replaces that, and I believe it also negates the lot size requirement.
So let me ask you something, so the board knows, and maybe I don't. Can you build this, if you built this smaller, can you still build it without this variance?
Yes.
So they can build no matter what, it's just that they would be, you said a foot into the...
The request, the request for the variance allows us, yes, we can build, we could build the 20 by 28, I don't remember the exact size, and stay within the building footprint.
Right.
The request for the variance allows us to reposition the piers that are going to support the building underneath it, so they're parallel to the flow of the 100-year event, therefore providing less restriction.
Right.
If we stay within, because of the way the lot is shifted, we'll have piers that are not truly lined up with the floodway, with the flow in Rapid Creek in the event. The variance allows us to rotate our piers and therefore having one blockage instead of three or four offsetting blockages and causing further risk.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Yeah, can I say one more thing about this walkway that was designated back when they first originally plotted out the land? I'd like to make sure that that stays there. I have friends and family, and we all go down to the creek to see, you know, to fish or to see the area.
And he's shaking his head, sir, that...
Make sure that that's...
Can you verify that, sir?
Even if the Shermaesters were to go after that land and try to incorporate it, to put it back on the tax rolls, that 10-foot walkway easement would stay. That's never going to go away.
Okay.
Even if it was incorporated into their land. They want that as much as you guys do.
Yeah, and that's vitally important, because, you know, that's part of going down to see that area, is being able to have access to the creek, so...
Thank you, sir.
I mean, if you get along with the neighbors, it's fine, they'll usually let you come down there, but you never know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Farby, please.
There was a statement made that the lot, the plat, the lot is grandfathered, legal The rules say it's a system, not the plat. Any existing system prior to February 28th, 1975 is accepted from the rules, not the plat, existing system. So make sure that the record, and it should be 74530104, is existing systems.
Okay, George, let him speak for just a sec. Okay.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Reading 745301-05, existing subdivisions and developments exempted from lot size requirements. Housing subdivisions and housing developments planted before February 28th, 1975 are exempt from the lot size requirements of 74530116, provided compliance with other provisions of this chapter are achieved.
George?
We have requested, and again, I'll go back to it, I have electronic correspondence saying that the state and the county will allow this.
Thank you. Facts?
I...
Can't deny the facts. Sorry, George, I had to put that in there.
It's not, it's not the plat, it's the system. There's no existing system there.
Okay, George.
And the systems, new systems need an acre.
Thank you, George. Let's move forward, guys. We do have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and have roll call.
Are we back with Farby, because he had his substitute, and then he withdrew?
He withdrew it, so, right.
Did anyone else second, though?
There was a motion by DeSanto, and so he had no second. Commissioner Farby had his second withdrew, drawn, so that was a substitute gone. And then Commissioner Buskard and DeSanto, first and second, did the next motion.
Yep.
So let's go ahead and have roll call.
I didn't withdraw my motion, the second was withdrawn, but I didn't...
Yes, that's what we said. Okay.
And Buskard?
Yes.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
No.
LaCroy?
No.
Haddock? Aye. Motion fails. No variance. You need four votes, honey.
That's...
Thank you.
I knew that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next, we are on to the consent calendar. PJ, please?
Have to come out of Board of Adjustment, ma'am.
What's that?
Make a motion to come out of the Board of Adjustment.
Oh, thank you. Been a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment, and a second by Buskard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Who is the motion by?
Buskard was the motion maker, DeSanto was the second. Thank you. And all in favor said aye, and we're good to go. Are you good, are you ready, Karen? Sorry. Thank you. PJ, please.
Consent agenda, item B, first reading and public hearing of major plan unit development amendment 1703 for Chris Hamm. KTM Design Solutions Incorporated is the agent to amend the existing plan unit development district to allow for additional storage units, to allow the single-family residence to be used as a caretaker's residence, and to allow future commercial uses and to allow a car wash facility. The Planning Commission recommends continued major plan unit development 1703 to the June 6, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting.
So that, we need a motion for that, PJ, to continue that item?
Yes, please.
Move.
Moved by LaCroy, and second by...
DeSanto.
DeSanto. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Regular planning agenda.
Regular agenda, item C, first reading and public hearing of major plan unit development amendment 1702 for Cindy Dickmeyer, Robbins Roost Cabins LLC, to amend the existing plan unit development in accordance with section 213. If you remember, this had gone through a subdivision layout plat and a minor plat, and the major plan unit development was the next step for this amendment. The applicant is in the process of selling the property as of Sunday, and is asking for a continuation to June 20, 2017, as this will probably fall into a new owner's hands by then.
We have a motion for it continues to June 17.
Second, that's my motion.
Motion by Buskard, second by LaCroy. Now you're following me, Buskard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is items from Commission Office Manager Holly Anies, please.
Commissioners, I just placed this on the agenda to get this in front of you, to start thinking about, they are now taking comments on the potential rewrite of the Waters of the U.S. I've also included in your packets the letter that was submitted by the 2014 board that was in opposition to the new rules. So I just wanted to ask this board if you wanted to go on record with any proposals on a proposed rewrite of the Waters of the U.S. I don't necessarily need any decisions or action from this board today. My understanding is there'll be some more information coming down from the state, and it's due June 19. So we really have two more meetings to make any decisions if this board chooses to comment.
Thank you. Any, Commissioner LaCroy?
I just wanted to thank Holly for her work on this. I read through what the previous commission had written. I think I'm still in line with what that was, how that was written. I don't know what the other commissioners have any thoughts on that, but... I just wanted to thank Holly for her work on this. I, I read through what the previous commission had written. I think I'm still in line with what that was, how that was written. I don't know how, what the other commissioners have any thoughts on that, but...
Any discussion? Commission?
I definitely like more time to study it.
Can we just, um, continue this, Holly, so we have more, can have more-
You don't even have to make a motion to continue. I'll just-
We can just continue it and-
Flip it on the next agenda if, if I get more information to present.
Okay. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
To add, to add to what Commissioner LaCroy said, I, the twenty-fourteen letter is good. And, uh, and my positions certainly are, I certainly agree with what they're saying then, and from my perspective, it's be- very, very tough to write for EPA or, or whoever to write in the, the, the new president's thinking, uh, tough, tough, tough issues. And I don't know how you put it in writing. It's just, it's kinda a bad, be of common sense, you know? Is, is that a pothole? Is, is that a water United States? I, and obviously people like me fear, 'cause I've had, do have a drainage, you know, and sometime a fair, federal bureaucrat will knock on my door and say, you gotta quit doing such and such, so. I'm glad that, uh, the previous administration's gone. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, items from Chair and Commission members? Buskut, do you have anything?
No.
DeSanto? Um, just general items right now.
Okay.
LaCroy, do you have any general items?
No general items.
Farby?
No, thank you.
Okay. And let's go to twenty-three now, Committee Reports. Buskut?
No, I don't have any.
DeSanto?
I do. I'd like to report on the Fair Board. Uh, retreat that we had was an excellent retreat, a lot of good information that was passed. Um, the Fair is moving forward with their new building, and have already, um, in the line for bids for some extremely profitable, uh, events that will come into that building. They have, they expect to be able to pay for that entire building with profits from the events that they're going to hold in that building. Um, they have also gotten to the point where they've, they have so many events, um, that are looking at coming to Rapid City because of that additional stall building, that they are, they've secured a lease on the polo fields, um, and would like to entertain expansion of the fairgrounds to include the footprint of the fo- of, of the polo fields as well, um, to, uh, basically accommodate these additional events that are gonna be coming to Rapid City, uh, that are gonna be bringing, from what I could see, tremendous, tremendous economic impact to Rapid City. Um, on a, on another note, as far as a project that we've just completed with the fairgrounds, in updating the lighting system, um, they've already seen a nine-hundred-dollar savings in their electric bill on that building, uh, due to those, due to that lighting system. So we made a, we made a good choice there. And that is during a period of time that, uh, the building is, um, that the events there are slow right now. We'll see a much greater impact in the bill, or in the electric, electric bill, um, and the difference between last year and this year with the new lighting, when we start really using that building, like for the fair and, and, uh, that kinda thing. So, um, I'd like to thank the Commission for approving that lighting project, and I think that it, as I had said when we did approve it, it's gonna pay for itself very quickly, um, without a doubt. So the Fair is moving forward quickly, and, uh, has a lot of exciting, um, growth in the future.
Thank you. And Commissioner San, I'll let Lloyd LaCroy go for next, if that's okay?
Reported, we had our Pennington County Extension Advisory Board meeting last night, going over the budget. Uh, Matt's done a good job of keeping it in line. Uh, they also last Friday had a, a fundraiser for the Kansas City Fire, which they raised, it was a soup, uh, dish fundraiser. They end up raising twelve-hundred dollars. They had a good turnout for that. Uh, also in the last couple of weeks, I've attended the Community Advisory Committee meeting, which we gave a report last week. I'm on that board, and we had a good turnout, do two reports a year for the Community Advisory on, on the advancement of relationships in the, the community, and, and Von Vargas did a very good job of, uh, displaying that. But it just, it, meetings like that never cease to amaze me that, you know, us as, as leaders in the community, we get all the information of what's going on in the community, and some of the questions that some of the people had that were out in the audience, some of their suggestions and stuff, we already got going on. They just didn't know it, 'cause they'd never attended the meeting before. So it, that don't, goes for, one of the reasons why I like being on the Commission is, is it gives me a chance to go other areas besides in the city and, and see what's actually going on. But, uh, that was a good one, and then I've also attended the Collective Impact, where we're doing more work on, uh, feeding Rapid City. There's some new director coming in and so forth, and there's more stuff coming out on that, and, and we did, uh, as the guiding council, we're discussing what's happening, where, what, where we're gonna go within the community, so.
Nice.
With that, that's all I got to report, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Farby?
As I mentioned earlier, I went to a weed and pesticide meeting, and, and I jokingly said to spend a day, but, but I, I highly encourage those of you that haven't been out to see what Scott and the, and the folks do. I highly recommend it. And have them take you to some of the really, really bad thistle spots, just so you get a feel for, for what's out there. It'll, it's an ever-ending problem, but, but, uh, I think Scott and, and the troops do a heck of a job with, with what they have. Thank you.
Um, how about the leadership meeting that you went to, George? Did you learn anything from that with the mayor and, I think, uh, remember the city-county meeting? George, did you get anything out of that?
You wanna speak to it, Mark, or should I?
Go ahead, George.
The, uh, of course, the mayor wasn't there, so we didn't learn much from him. Uh, the-
Funny.
We did talk a little bit about South Valley Drive, and I still think that's, uh, certainly an issue that, that needs to be resolved before I go spend any more money. And most of the discussion was, uh, Mead County, Box Elder in Mead County.
Nice.
And, uh, Mead County obviously is pushing really hard for a, a road across. I forget the, the avenue of what, one forty-fifth, is that, is that correct? Uh, and right along that roadway would be, uh, and, and I, I guess I, I can see where they're coming from, to hook up a sewer line from Somerset, Black Hawk, Piedmont, all those areas. That's a, a goal in the future, but I think it's a, it's a good goal, to hook up to the, do a new treatment plant at the base in Box Elder share. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Thanks for all the reports today. I went to a few of these meetings, but it looks like it's been reported on, so you guys did an awesome job. And thanks for filling in on the leadership meeting, George and DeSanto, uh, Mark.
Sure.
Yes, sir?
I have one more comment on the, on the, that meeting.
Yes, sir.
We went into some pretty lengthy discussion about fireworks.
I was gonna ask you about that.
And I think what came, what we came to the conclusion, and I'm gonna need to talk to Sheriff Toleman, um, possibly the city will talk to the police department, but our solution, or at least kinda what we're leaning towards, we're never gonna get a ban on fireworks, and we don't want one, frankly. I don't.
Right.
But I think what we can do is address the timely, or, or the time that people quit shooting fireworks off, put a, put a, a curfew on what time the, you know, you gotta stop shooting fireworks off at eleven-thirty or midnight. Uh, Box Elder has an eleven-thirty curfew, and it seems to work quite well. Um, I only lived there for six months, but, uh, we were out there during the Fourth of July, and, um, or last year, the Fourth of July, and pretty much after eleven-thirty, and everything, and I mean, it was a, it was crazy, but prior to that, but things settled down very quickly. Probably by twelve-thirty, no one was shooting fireworks anymore in Box Elder. Uh, the second o- option is looking at, um, a possible or, um, a fine. One of the biggest complaints in the valley of the people that have been calling me left and right are the litter that's left behind, and that winds up blowing into other people's yards and that kinda stuff. Um, so finding out maybe a, a, a way to levy a fine, a litter fine, if your fireworks aren't cleaned up in a specific period of time, maybe forty-eight hours. You got forty, forty-eight hours to sweep up your driveway and get all your stuff out of your yard, um, 'cause we know in Rapid City, wind can come at any time. So, so that's a, that's another area that we're, that we're gonna need to address, I'm sure, um, soon.
Thank you. And I'm glad you're looking into it. I remember you talking to me about that, so I appreciate it. Scott was gonna ask you that.
And I'll ap- I apologize. I didn't listen to the fireworks discussion, 'cause where I live, fireworks are outlawed.
Okay. Next, we're on approval of the vouchers. Your motion?
We motion to approve the vouchers.
Motion by Buskut, second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Um, I have a little discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Um, some of them, uh, I, I just wanna reiterate that I appreciate the, the better explanations of what the money's being spent on. Um, that helps a lot, and when you're writ- reading through these to go, holy smokes, we spent one-point-two million dollars on this. What was this? And-
Makes a difference.
You know, it makes a big difference.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Ms. Holly?
Um, I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and maybe this is part of, um, your comment, Commissioner, is when you see big blocks of blank space, and if it's coded CRT, that's a court voucher, and those are the, um, conflict cases
Okay.
that we're trying to figure out if it makes sense to put a description in, or if that's acceptable to the Board of Commissioners to just know that when it's a CRT, it's either an abuse neglect case or a criminal case that we've conflicted out.
Okay.
So I'm not sure exactly what description this board may or may want, may or may want to see, or if you're okay with it being blank if it's a CRT.
What's the wish of the board?
I'm okay with it being blank, as long as the blanks are very, very small.
That's another discussion.
Good point, George. Okay. Anybody else?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
LaCroy, Buskut, you're good? Okay.
Yep.
So we do have a motion and a second, and the other discussion?
Yeah, I just, for the, for the record, it's five million one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. And one of my constituents, several of my constituents have commented about the amount, so I'll put it on the record, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farby. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Commissioner Farby. Items from public?
Five million here, George, five million there, person, you're talking big money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Richard?
Hello, Dan Richard. Jeez, I left my pen two weeks ago, and there it is.
Got to charge you for that rent space that you left that pen.
Heard's a Hill City Cafe. Uh, Dan Richard, uh, first thing I've wanted to do is piggyback on Commissioner Farby's comments about Scott Duffy. Uh, several years, three, maybe four years, uh, the Hill City area was, was, uh, ground zero for the bugs. And every year, Scott Duffy would come out and walk the Forest Service around our property, and mark the trees that needed to be cut down, and gave us the official okay that, to give him his number if the Forest Service showed up and wanted to know what we were doing. So, uh, that's a lot of hard work, walking around ten acres of ground that's all rock, so, um...
Thank you for that compliment.
He did a great job, just did a great job. And one phone call, question on anything, one phone call, wham, he was out there. If you could get ahold of him. Uh, the other thing is, I, uh, I wanna first apologize for, not getting the comments, I've got them written. I wrote them a week or so ago. Uh, can't figure out a way to attach them to your web mail. Um, had several people in there trying to do it, can't get it done. I'm sure there's a way to do it. Uh, but I'm gonna just print copies of them and give them to Ms. Holly, and she can distribute them to you guys. So, kinda give up on trying to attach it, so. And that's the only thing I gotta say.
Thank you. Mr. Richard?
It's done, but not delivered.
Mr. Richard, I'm gonna send you an email, if that's okay, on the veterans' things that we have done, um, for Pennington County, because you had said we haven't done anything, and, um, for me, the veterans are very important, and, and we have done many things for the veterans for Pennington County, and I just wanna make sure you know that, and then, uh, send you an email to that effect, if that's okay. Thank you, sir.
Got my email?
I do. I don't? Oh, I thought I did. Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Do we have any executive session? Nope. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Buskut, second by DeSanto, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.